Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. Mayor Pro Tim. Mr. Looney, do you, can you see that we have a quorum with us tonight?
It is my understanding from the city manager that we do.
Thank you. Quorum being present, then I do declare our meeting open. And I'm going to ask Lonnie Waters, if you will. Would you lead us in application, please? Have to unmute Lonnie.
Lord, let us bow our heads and just give you your thanks and glory from all. Lord, we just asked you and thank you for your blessings. That Higgins County and the city of Jasper has been able to continue and service our people, our residents, and the administration watching over, guiding us and continuing to carry out our duties. Lord, we just thank you for all these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. And Council Redfield, I love the fact that when I look at your photo, I see a flag in the background. So will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of our citizens and our country. And to our beloved, our precious, our representative, our representative's citizens. We're being led into this process of blessing.
Thank you. And you know, Zoom, that doesn't come across quite as well as it does in person, but I'm still happy to have it done. Thank you, sir. Council, we have, is item four agenda. Our agenda is in front of you. I would entertain a motion at this time for an adoption of our agenda.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and our agenda is adopted. Council, you have mailed out to you in your package the minutes of our April the 6th regular council meeting. And I would entertain a motion at this time to approve those minutes as were dispersed to you.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item six is old business. A request for a special event on Main Street. And I think that's Donnie Fowler to talk about a car show. Do we have Donnie with us tonight? I'm going to ask Councilman Snively, she has any information on that?
Donnie Fowler is not with us tonight. I think in lieu of all the COVID information and stuff that's going on, I say we remove that and then let them come back to us if they want to approach that at another time.
Okay. And so now will that require a motion of counsel? Attorney Siphon?
Yes, Mayor, I would make a motion to table it until applicant returns to review that.
I make a motion, we table this request.
Have a motion to table in a second, I need.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
As long as it's understood in the motion, Mayor, if I may, that it is tabled until the applicant returns, not tabled until the next meeting.
That's correct.
Yes.
Tabled until the applicant returns. So with a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion is carried. Under item six, this will be number B. Consideration approval of ordinance number 2020-12, 858 Old Field, Air Run, unit number 102. This is a special land use permit. And I'm going to ask Brandon Douglas to bring our, bring that to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council for the public, during your April the 6th regular council meeting, you will have the introduction of this particular item, which is a special land use permit for the aforementioned address or special land use permit. And as such, the requisite introduction at one meeting, consideration at a second or subsequent meeting. Nothing has changed in so much as this would just allow for that particular business or building to be utilized for light welding and fabrication. And there's been no further updates from the April 6th meeting.
So we need a mo- So my brand new computer decided that it was time to take a nap. And cut itself off.
Welcome back.
Well, such happens. It's technological sniffing and half a lot of that. So where were we?
Looking for a motion on old business B.
Consideration approval of ordinance, ordinance number 2020-12. Right. I'm assuming that we need a motion on this and then a second to pass this and then that's the last of that. This particular one, okay?
Have we had a motion and second, Brandon?
We don't. Listening for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve this item with the understanding from the owner of the applicant that this does not constitute a change in zoning and also that any other regulations outlined in the zoning ordinance are following.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item C, consideration of approval of playground equipment at the city park through monies that were in coverage through assignment of fund balance. Council members Snively and Council member Fowles, would you bring this to us, please?
Yes, we have gotten three different quotes to move forward on this. I make a motion that using the local company, we give staff up to $55,000 to start the process of getting our equipment, playground equipment back installed. And I don't know. I think the name of it is Southern, sorry, hold on.
Southeast Outdoor Solutions?
Yes. Thank you, Kirk.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve Southeast Outdoor Solutions, up to $55,000 to replace playground equipment.
Second.
I like the second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, something I want to point out too is that we are spending money local and it's going to have its advantages whenever we need repair in parts. So it's going to be good for us all the way around.
Yes.
And I agree because they have, they have done a lot of work around Higgins County and they've done exemplary work.
There's done good work. I've seen some of their work.
So we have a second. Any further discussion now? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Playground equipment passes and will be installed. Thank you. Item D, consideration of approval of right of way purchase of .24 acres of a parcel number JA12075 for $35,000 for the road department to authorize the lay-in city camp, city manager to execute necessary documents as approved by the city attorney. I'm going to let Brandon, if you will, bring that to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council for the public, this particular item was essentially moved forward during the last quarter of 2019, whereupon there had been some direction provided to staff to find some verbal agreements with a property owners relative to a right-of-way purchase that needs to take place, .24 acres just behind the Methodist Church. There was a parcel whereupon there had been original discussions amongst prior city and the property owner for some in-kind notion that was later determined to perhaps not have been fully realized. So the actual purchase of the property is in essence coming after there had already been some aid on the ground. However, city attorney Siphon had completed the, and the necessary plaque along with the legal description. So we are merely moving this item to some sort of completion and finality so that we can keep this particular matter behind us.
And it would be under the, as this is a road improvement project, whereupon the paving of the road was from 2014's lost monies. So there is sufficient funds for the rights of the position.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve this matter. I think that it's already been well documented to everyone.
Yes.
I'll take a motion for that, please.
Make a motion, we approve as presented.
And a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item seven is a public hearing and A is a request of a text amendment to the Jasper zoning ordinance for the inclusion of a new zoning district of dense residential infill, DRI 6. And I'm going to ask David Siphon to people weigh in first on this and Brandon to follow.
Thank you, Mayor. The DR 6 district is related under the zoning text amendment. The zoning text amendment is just a fancy way of saying that you're changing the language of your zoning ordinance. And by this zoning text amendment, we are creating the dense residential infill district, which allows for a density of up to six residential units on an acre of land. So it's creating a little bit more dense density than what's currently allowed under the other residential zoning districts of the ordinance. The concept is that you would have smaller houses, the smaller lots, and that would allow first-time home buyers or senior citizens or working-class housing to be developed on lots within the city where appropriate. And I would like to emphasize that under the amendment, the council still uses the zoning standards to determine if a specific area is appropriate for the DRI 6 zoning district. And so that's what the zoning text amendment does in a nutshell. And basically, the, the language of the amendment goes through each of the sections of the zoning ordinance where we needed to, to add this section in. So that would be my brief explanation and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that the mayor and council have.
And Brandon, will you weigh in, please, before we go to questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council and for the public, from time to time, it is appropriate for staff and the elected body to examine our zoning ordinance and if it's essentially working for us in regards to the existing zoning districts. Upon my arrival last year, it was identified that there were very few zoning districts associated with our zoning ordinance, such as a practice, like to incorporate the market in terms of the marketability of your community and how you can take some lots of existing record and apply that practically to your zoning ordinance, which is at times a dated document. Do some updates. So this is kind of set in motion in response to identified need of incorporating additional. I will add that my recommendation moving forward, as identified last month, we will examine our zoning ordinance and look for making sure that it's consistent with our needs as a community as well as what the, the market, I say market, our competitors as a community, you are oftentimes competing for the quality of life issues, the people, the business, really help build community. So from my vantage point, this is an opportunity for us to begin integrating new districts that provide options for applicants, property owners who otherwise want to look at how they utilize their property. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Council, I will end my remarks and as a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, for any sort of public input.
Oh, I'll open it up for any of the public to speak. I would ask, actually, I would ask Mr. Reese, Wayne Reese, if you would go first, sir. If you have any comments, Mr. Reese?
I, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I think you've done a tremendous amount of work since I met with you earlier. I really like what you've done with this particular ordinance that you drafted. What we are running into as someone who provides rental housing for people in the community is that we're finding a lot of people are searching for something nice to live in while they build a house for themselves or so that they can live in because they've relocated to the county and they're looking for a new job. We're also finding several seniors who are wanting to move to Jasper in order to be closer to their younger family so that they can interface with that family and so that the family can give them assistance. What I've noticed in a lot of jurisdictions is that a main focus of economic development has been to attract senior citizens because they're a group of people who do not tax your systems. They avail themselves of the healthcare in the community. They pay for that. Their Medicare pays for that. Their insurance pays for that. And the same with the retail establishments. And as you know, we have a proposal, should you adopt this ordinance, that we would be prepared to serve as a demonstration site for what can be done with this particular type of zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to give a little more insight if you move on to, to the zoning issue that I have before you this evening.
Thank you, sir. And is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to this matter? Brandon, can you explain about? You're muted.
I am currently looking to see if there are any virtual handraisings or any requests. And do not see anyone just for a good measure. Look momentarily here and I will unmute all parties, just to make sure that we did not miss anyone, Mr. Mayor. One moment, I'm going to mute, unmute everyone. If you don't have any questions, please mute yourself back.
I'm coming. I'm coming, mommy.
Well said. Yeah.
I think that was a vote in favor. Okay, with no one coming forward, we might go back to that mute trick again, Brandon. And, and before, Mr. Reese, before you go away, sir, on mute, can I ask you, our next item up is going to be actually a consideration of, of your parcel. And I would love to have your permission to change that designation that we have, the R3 designation to our designation, our new designation of DRI 6.
I would wholeheartedly consent to that.
Thank you so much. And with that, as to the reading of this text amendment, I will need a motion from a, I will need a motion and a second to adopt this text amendment.
I make the motion to approve the DRI 6.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. And I'm sorry, Ann, was that you on the second?
Second.
Kirk on the second, all right. Motion in the second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carried unanimously. Item B, under section seven, consider of a, consideration of request to rezone parcel number JA11023 at 26 Hickory Street from R1 to DRI 6. Brandon, do you wish to bring this to us or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council and just for the general public, at the March 2nd, mayor and council regular meeting, there was a request stemming from a public hearing at the February 25th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It was requested by the applicant to table the matter on March 2nd, but in order to allow staff and legal some time to work with the applicant and/or his zoning ordinance for identifying ways to make something a little more palatable for the zoning ordinance, which the aforementioned text amendment was drafted. As such, there was a request to put a, before the public, another public on this matter. So in compliance with that request and because we had advertised for the public hearing, we have done so. So with that, if there's any additional background we can provide, or Mr. Mayor, you can call the applicant and/or public.
Okay. And Lonnie, do you have anything to add to this?
No, sir. I don't have anything to add other than all the notifications have been sent out, signs have been posted, ads in the paper, so everything was carried out. Other than that, I have nothing to comment.
Counsel, you have in front of you a consideration of a request to rezone parcel number JA11023 at 26 Hickory Street from R1 to DRI 6. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter?
Mayor, from a procedural, from a procedural point of view, are we zoning something in an ordinance that has yet to be, become an ordinance? Seems like we need another reading before we can zone something in this category. David?
Well, my thinking is y'all have approved the introduction of the zoning text amendment at this meeting. And you would approve the introduction of the rezoning ordinance to rezone Mr. Reese's property to the DRI 6 in this meeting. And then at the June meeting, we'd have, you know, what we colloquially call the second reading, but the passage of the zoning text amendment creating the DRI 6 district. And we would pass that first and then we would have the second reading of Mr. Reese's rezoning and pass it after we pass the zoning text amendment. So you are correct, we got to have two readings. But we're doing a first reading for both tonight and then we'll do a second reading in the June meeting and just do Mr. Reese's after we approve the zoning text amendment.
Should I change my motion to accept this as first reading?
Of the zoning ordinance, I think that would be correct. Yes, please.
Okay. Move we accept this as first reading.
So our revised motion would be to accept this as first reading and we have a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you.
So the request of text amendment, would that be a first reading also, David?
That is correct. That's a first reading also.
And Mr. Reese, your patience has been legendary and we want to thank you for that. We appreciate your working with this council.
Well, I look forward to working with you on making this a, a very nice little demonstration project for the city.
We will want to be able to look at that at a later time.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Wayne.
So much.
Thank you.
Item eight, under new business, consideration and approval of ordinance number 2020-15 for a text amendment to the Jasper zoning ordinance for inclusion of a new zoning district of dense residential infill, DRI 6. And did we just not do that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and for the council and for the public, due to you all taking action out of the public hearing, the next two items, item A and item B, have already been fulfilled and duly noted.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't recognize that until you said it, but it's under new business.
Okay, good. Item C, consideration of ordinance number 2020-13 for a request to rezone parcel number 041062 at Highway 53 West from C2 to R3. Brandon, will you bring this to us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, and we do have the applicant with us this evening. And what I want to point out is the Planning and Zoning Commission met last Tuesday, April the 28th, whereupon this particular item, there was a public hearing on the matter. There was no one from the general public, in essence, who spoke out in favor of or against. In your packet is the staff analysis, which I will ask for our land use consultant, Rebecca Kiefer from Clark Patterson Lee, to provide the staff analysis. But from a synopsis, the applicant's legal representation did provide a presentation, I believe, here to provide as such after staff analysis. And the commission did recommend to move this matter forward unanimously to the mayor and council. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll ask Kiefer from Clark Patterson Lee to provide the staff analysis.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Again, this is Rebecca Kiefer. Thank you for having me. What I'll do is give a, kind of a brief introduction of the, the general conditions of the property and the request and then move into the analysis that's in your zoning ordinance. ordinance, as well as our staff recommendations. So the request is for rezoning from a general commercial district, C two, to R three, a multifamily residential district, to allow for seventy six unit, age restricted multi housing, multifamily housing development. The current site consists of just over six acres of undeveloped land, and it's located along Highway fifty three. There has been some coordination with the airport, and they have indicated that multifamily is an incompatible use. Not only is that a result from the FAA guidelines of the noise concerns, but then also concerns of uses where congregation of people is a safety concern for, you know, aircraft and things, so that is why those guidelines are in place, is also for that, that congregation of people, and not wanting to have those uses adjacent to the airport. So the proposed development consists of three two-story buildings and a fourth amenity building, and then there are exterior amenities that are noted on the site plan, a pavilion, a gazebo, a community garden that will serve the tenants, the residents there. So the analysis required in your zoning ordinance are found in section ninety four dash forty three, and those enumerate what criteria you're permitted to use in making legislative decisions like rezoning. So staff went through a detailed analysis, and that's what's provided for you in your staff report. I'll note just a couple of high level comments from that. Most importantly, the property is located in the West Jasper Gateway Corridor character area, and that character area in general seeks new development that contains a mix of uses, and also enumerates several uses that are acceptable. Those uses being institutional, medical, office, restaurant, retail, and service. In another section of that character area, it does indicate residential as a potential appropriate use, but it qualifies as, it's only where appropriate. So staff, as a result of all, all that analysis contained in section ninety four dash forty three, finds that its adjacency of land uses, its location along state routes, and the potential runway protection issues makes it an incompatible use, and therefore it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So staff has recommended denial of the application, but we have within the staff report provided six recommendations to guide you and recommend that if mayor and city council do find that the minimum requirements of the ordinance are met, that you adopt it with these recommendations, and I'll read those into the record so that you have them. Number one, development shall be in compliance with the development standards in the zoning ordinance and reflect the site plan and elevation presented by the applicant. Number two, a stub road shall be constructed to connect the subject property to future adjacent developments for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Easements shall be submitted prior to issuance of a final CO to accommodate the access. Number three, soft surface trails and sidewalks shall be provided on site. Number four, a minimum eight-foot sidewalk shall be constructed along the road frontage running the length of the subject property. The sidewalk shall be placed behind a landscape strip running parallel to Highway fifty three west with a minimum depth of seven feet. Number five, streetlights shall be installed along the road spaced a distance of sixty feet on center. And number six, buildings shall be constructed with a minimum of eighty percent brick along each facade. And so those conditions that we included in the staff report are based on the criteria and the characteristics outlined in the comprehensive plan as desired in this character area. So when the time comes at your next meeting for you all to make, to render a decision, just in a little bit of a guidance for how to, how you might use these conditions, you have the authority to approve, approve with conditions, or deny applications. And so if you wanted to apply these conditions to the rezoning ordinance, then you would make a motion to approve the conditions. If you wanted any kind of alterations to these conditions, then you could approve with conditions as presented by staff with the following exceptions. That's just to give you a little direction as to how you can use this as guidance. So with that, that concludes my presentation, so I'll be ready for any kind of questions that you guys have, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Rebecca at this point? And Ms. Preston, I believe you're here representing this company, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, and I do have some plans that I'd like to share with you, if that's all right.
Yes, I wanted to invite you to do that.
Just a moment. Okay, in front of the planning commission meeting, we had about a forty-five minute presentation, and I promise I won't do that to y'all this evening. I know you have quite a lot of things on your agenda after this, but I represent Tishko Properties, and I've got with me today both the developer from Tishko and the consultant, Mr. Thompson, in addition to some of our experts who have helped consult with this property. So if you have any questions as I'm going along, please feel free to interrupt. They might be the more appropriate person to give you the answer than me, but I did want to let you know that they're here, as well as the current owner of the property is here to speak in, in support of this property. So we're looking to develop a senior property, and this is gonna be a sixty-two and older property. It's not just a multifamily apartment complex, it's meant to be a development that caters to seniors, and that we offer some services that make it more like a club, and that's why we call it club living. So it's not just an apartment community, it's really meant for seniors who want to live only among other seniors, maybe aren't up for the upkeep of a single family by themselves, but still want to have that sense of community, of living around other people and having that sense of community and events that happen. And so at our planning commission meeting, Ms. Kiefer and some of the staff requested some additional things on our site plan. And so we set to work over the weekend, and I've got now sharing with you our revised site plan. So I want to point out a few things to you. You look at the very front of the property, along Highway fifty three, we now have an eight-foot sidewalk, which will connect the property to both sides and to future development. You'll notice some trees that are next to that property, staff asked for a seven-foot buffer. Your ordinance actually requires a twenty-foot buffer, so we've gone ahead and put a twenty-foot buffer of trees that will be, right now we have it positioned with the sidewalk in front of the buffer, but we're, we're open to changing that, but there will be a twenty-foot buffer of landscaping between the roadway and our project. And then if you look around the sides, there's some existing trees, but we will make sure that we have a twelve-foot buffer on the front and the back, all the other sides. So I call it the fronts, the top, the bottom, and the rear. You would probably call it the side setbacks and the rear, we'll make sure there's a twelve-foot buffer. In addition to the gazebo and the pavilion, we've added two nature trails that you can see, they're the dotted lines behind the property, that will go for the seniors to be able to walk through. There's also room in the future, if there is development on either side of us, that we can connect those walking trails to the, to the developments next to us. So that was one of staff's concerns. We've left open room for connections in the future. We've also, it's kind of hard to see in this such a small plan, but we've also put streetlights. My client has committed to making streetlights along the road frontage. That's what the number fives are, that we would put streetlights along the road frontage, and then also within the development, there will be street lighting. The street lighting within the development will be faced either downwards or inward so that it won't bother the neighbors, so that it won't be have a light shining on the neighbors. We've got the crossing walks now added, which are the, the number three. There was some concerns, our original site plan was only a concept plan, but we, we went ahead to do more detail. Typically, we wouldn't provide this level of detail until we were submitting for a building permit, so we wanted to make sure you had all the information that, that you needed. So we've got the ADA parking spaces with crosswalks next to them, and a set of interconnecting sidewalks now. There's also your landscape ordinance, chapter eighty-six actually requires trees in the parking lot. So we've gone ahead and put some trees in the parking lot, and we've, if you'll notice, we've got more examples of where the trees would be, and including this area towards the bottom, which would be a tree preservation area, so that we can try to keep as much trees as possible. And that's typically something my client likes to do anyways, and I understand that that's a priority in the city of Jasper, is to maintain trees and have that type of natural landscaping. One thing I want to point out is this is a mixed, kind of a mixed use of commercial and residential, because the two-story community building will also have services available for residents, so that they can go in and purchase those additional services. Those services could range anywhere from a meal service, there will be a dining hall, among other things, so it is a, a true mixed-use development that has additional services available to residents. If you'll look, I've got a little bit better, if you're done with this screen, I just want to show you our next slide. And I'm happy to go back if you need me to. Staff asked that we, we had a design that used hardy plank, which is cement siding, and staff asked us to go back and add brick, which we have done. So if you'll notice, this is now a proposed elevation of what the, the development might look like, and it does encompass all brick. It would be eighty percent brick, which we were happy to do, and we're happy to have brick instead of hardy plank, if that's preferable. This, I think, is helpful, because it just shows the location of where we are now. The green arrow points to where the development will be. It is a vacant parcel, so you see now that there's no tree line in the front, we'll be adding twenty-foot of trees in the front, and you'll see that we're pretty much undeveloped on either side in the rear. One other thing I wanted to help zoom out a little bit, just for context, if you'll see on across the street from Highway fifty three, we've got single-family and residential. And behind us, actually, the little dots, you can literally, maybe not see them very well, there's actually existing single-family behind us. And then on either side, that's where the, the, the commercial developments are, but it's right adjacent to the Home Depot and the Bojangles and that rather large development. And we think that having a mixed-use development like ours would help be a buffer between the existing single-family and the commercial that's already there, instead of having another high-density commercial use. I'm sure most of those single-family that are there would prefer something that is a little bit less of impact than another high-use commercial development. One thing, we will have elevators in our buildings, and we will also have a, a transit use, so we will have a bus, and that will help with any traffic concerns. We have buses at almost all of our properties, the buses will take the seniors to the Kroger, to the Ingalls, to the existing, the, the hospital that is down the road, and so that, that's a service that we do offer our residents, and that helps, and that's usually a very popular service. I know one of the concerns in the staff report was that this was located near commercial, and I just wanted to point out, you, you have a new development that was built, Retreat at Jasper, and that's right behind the Ingalls, and it's surrounded by commercial, and it, the tax assessments indicate that the property values have not decreased since this was built, and that this is consistent with the type of land use development that's happening in the city already of having commercial next to these types of developments. Most of the time, local governments prefer it to be next to commercial, rather than, most people don't want this type of development in a single-family subdivision. This is an example of one of our properties, I just wanted to show you what the landscaping typically looks like. And here is another example of a property, and this is an all-brick property, so you can get an idea of what it would look like, and that we have the azaleas, that is typical. We've owned this property for years, and that is what it has, looks like still today. The FAA concerns, I would be remiss, and I'm gonna go quickly, but if I didn't talk about this, I'd be remiss, but we first learned that there might be some concerns about the airport in, right before the first planning commission meeting. And so we asked for a continuance, which was given to us in order for us to conduct a study involving the airport, we call it the, the, the area of concern, which is what Ms. Kiefer was talking about, and the noise. And we found nothing in the airport regulations and nothing in the airport's records that indicate that this is actually a concern based on the number of gatherings. And in fact, the only concern that the FAA had about residential development in this area was a potential noise. And so we did a noise study, which was done on the site, and I've concerned, I've included what the FAA regulations actually say about single-family. So if you'll look, they say anytime a residential area has a noise level below sixty-five degree decibels, that it is considered compatible with an airport. So really, the concern in the FAA guidelines is primarily about the noise concerns. So we went through, and I think it's interesting to note that the FAA isn't necessarily against this being a high-density development, because they typically prefer commercial, which would usually have more people than a residential area, and they typically even prefer motels in, next to airports, because really the concern is about noise, they don't want to have noise complaints from residents all the time. And so that is something that, that we looked into, because we, we would be concerned about noise also. And we looked at not only the noise study, but we also did a study based on the annual records of the airport, and we were, based on the airport's own records, we were able to determine, and I do have the, the expert who did the study with me today, if you'd like to ask her questions. But in order for the airport no, noise or safety to be a concern, there would have to be approximately three thousand and six hundred percent more activity at this airport of the military use, and two hundred and forty percent more activity of the general aviation use, in order for noise to even be a factor that the FAA would be concerned about. Another thing I want to point out is that these aren't rules, they aren't regulations, they are just guidelines that the FAA recommends that local governments look at, and that airports look at when they're making plans. And so the airport, if the airport wanted to do an, an expansion or something like that, they would need to do all sorts of studies, which they haven't done yet. We spoke to the county about this, the county actually told us they didn't have any concerns about it, that they felt that this was your decision to make. And so the first time we've heard about the crowds was today with Ms. Kiefer, but that is respectfully not my understanding of the FAA guidelines, and I have not seen anything that would make this be an issue for this property. And I also respectfully disagree with Ms. Kiefer about the comp plan. I think it actually recommends senior uses in this area, and that a mixed use in this area would be appropriate. And one of the things I did just want to point out is that we're in a parcel that is kind of caught in the, between the city and the, the county, if you'll notice that dip in the city lines, if you can see it behind the video, that is the parcel that we're talking about. So we're pretty much surrounded by the county on, on either side of us and, and behind us. And the county also, the city's boundaries go along Highway fifty three, but the idea of having a connected parcel, we're certainly not against being connected to our neighbors, we're happy to do whatever we can to help facilitate that in the future, but because those parcels are actually in the county, we're not sure what we can actually do to, to maintain that type of development at this point. I've already went over this, so I'm not gonna be roach the points, but I wanted to let you know too, that traffic is always a concern, everywhere I've been, traffic is a concern for local governments. Seniors typically tend to drive less, that I wanted, that we will have that bus service available that will help, and then one thing I think that's really important to point out is, if this were to be developed as a commercial use, the GDOT's traffic manuals estimate that there would be almost four thousand trips a day of cars that would go to this parcel. In contrast, if it's rezoned, that GDOT manual estimates that there would be five hundred and one trips, so it would be substantially less than if it was less So it would be substantially less than if it was, um, left as is, as it's currently zoned. And that's not even taking into account that this is a senior property and that typically seniors will use that transportation service and not drive as much as maybe they would at a typical apartment complex. So I did want to just bring out one thing, and I am a lawyer, so you'll have to forgive me for using, um, some legal jargon, but we are fine with all of the conditions that the city has imposed. We've gone ahead and, um, incorporated those conditions into our site plan. The only concern we really had was to condition two, which required us to build a road connecting it to the neighbor and granting an easement. And the reason we had a concern about that is because we, we don't really want to build a road to nowhere. There hasn't been any discussions with the neighbor about connecting the parcels. We're not necessarily against that. And I do think there's probably room for that in the future on our site plan. But we don't want to build, um, a site plan or, or a road that won't necessarily be useful to our neighbor, if that makes sense. We'd rather have a collaborative process when that development's ready to go with a neighbor to make sure that it is ma- meets safety standards and is a good location for that type of road connection. So we think our residents would much rather prefer us to maintain more trees and, and in that area than to kind of just have a road that, that dead ends or a driveway that dead ends at this point. Um, but we're not necessarily against it in the future. I just, at this point, without more information, we haven't been approached by any of the neighbors wanting an easement or anything like that. We're not really sure what that, that condition is requesting. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, I know you've been through a lot. Um, one last thing is if you see there is residential development behind us, those single-family houses are pointing, the arrows pointing to two single-family houses that are located that is actually between us and the airport. So if, if, um, if anything, God forbid, were to happen, those are, those are much closer to the airport than we are. And that, that is why we don't really think that the airport is a concern for this property.
Well, one of my, my issues with the project is I only see one way in and one way out. And, uh, you know, in the case of a merchant situation, that could definitely cause a problem.
And Steve, are you, are, Steve, are you on the call? I believe that was originally something that we, we had, they had worked out with the city about one way in and one way out, and it wasn't considered a concern? When they were going over the development plans? I wonder, are you on mute, Steve?
I'm sorry, I was talking to the computer and my computer's not working, so I didn't have a phone on.
Steve, the, the question was about, um, two ways in and out of the par- parcel. Off of Highway 53. We'll say the curb cuts off Highway 53 usually are up to GDOT. What they, they, because it's preempted, because it is a state road, we have to follow whatever GDOT says. And if GDOT will not allow two curb cuts, then they will usually typically dictate what they think is necessary for safety standards, which could include even a turn lane or, um, an egress, ingress lane. So that's something that we would come across when it came down to meeting with GDOT and what they're going to require for safety concerns.
And Emily, can you not hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I was, I was explaining earlier, early in this process, we did meet with the city and we met with, and then our, our engineers. And we do understand that the concern was for the emergency vehicles, whether it be ambulances, fire trucks, um, of that nature, being able to get it in and out. And the property has been designed to allow for the emergency vehicles to be able to maneuver through the property. We knew early on that that was a concern, so we, we, we really made a point to make sure that we, uh, that we handled those issues.
Okay, Emily, if you will, please take down the, uh, take down your screen now, your share screen. And, uh, I want to ask if there's, uh, anyone else that would like to speak to this project? Uh, I'm talking about our city council. Uh, before we go to this, are there any questions further that you'd like to ask about this?
Steve, I'd like to make a few comments. Um, they, most of them revolve around, uh, the land use. Um, this is a very, very critical area that for quite some time has been envisioned as being commercial. And, um, I think it is kind of, um, surrounded by county properties. And part of the reason for that is because these rural residential homes, uh, even though technically they're, they're single residences, they're large tracts of land. Um, and those are, um, some of the families are waiting for the, uh, development along Camp Road and along Highway 53 to make those conversions. Now, and I think that, uh, some of the discussions kind of centered around it being a benefit to, uh, have close-by, single residents. And it seemed like part of the conversation seemed to center more on it being more beneficial to have it around commercial. And, and I think that argument really has to, you have to go one way or the other with that argument. Uh, I do know that a similar project, not to, uh, say that the products are identical, but a single project, uh, a similar project about five or six years ago on either this property or an adjacent property did include, uh, all the way, uh, you could, uh, they had through traffic to Camp Road where you could actually, uh, have through traffic. Um, but again, in a residential area or a club setting like you have here, do you want that where that potentially could be a cut through? But, um, you know, if, if, I, I think the issue on the safety is always one that is of concern and it comes up quite a bit, I think, as we move forward with our, um, reevaluation of some of our processes, we may put something a little more place to stop that. My, my concerns really are, and the airport thing to me is, um, not a big concern. I, I think it's really more around the land use. And this is a prime piece of commercial property. It is surrounded by some stuff still in the county and has not been annexed and the owners have not requested annexed. But there's no question that for the most part, um, this is a commercial area in our city and one of the few that we have on the west side of 515. So those are my comments.
Counsel, are there any further, any further discussion?
Lonnie, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I really don't. I mean, uh, we went over a lot of the details that, uh, she mentioned when we had our first meeting. And, um, some of those points were brought out and they just commented that they would try to work with the city any way they could and make a good project. Other than that, I mean, uh, we haven't had anybody call our office for or against the project. So there haven't been a lot of conversations about it. So, I mean, that's about all I know to say about it.
With regard to the potential for a commercial use of the broker, Brandon Anderson has, uh, a good perspective on the commercial potential of the site, having marketed it for a while. And I'd like to ask Brandon to, to speak to that if he could.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So this tract, uh, of land has been on the market for a good bit of time and it's been fallow, so to speak, for quite some time. And I would say that if you look at this type of project that's being proposed, this is exactly the type of location that you would see this. If there are quite a few of these developments or developments similar to this in the county just south of you, Cherokee. And all of those projects are within half a mile of a retail center with, that's grocery anchored, just like the, uh, progress center that's right there. That's a necessity for these projects. It's a lifeblood and they all have transportation where they take these seniors to the grocery store to get groceries and, and the pharmacy that's associated with the grocery store. So this is actually a perfect location for this proposed use.
Brandon, how, how, what kind of response have you gotten from retailers, uh, on this site?
Yeah, that's a good point. So this is actually just a little bit outside of what you would consider retail or restaurant. Because you're not at the main and main, you're just too far from the main and main. You're out of the line of sight. And so there has been, there's been no one that has considered this for, uh, restaurant or retail use because of that. And when I say main and main, I mean at 515 and 53, that intersection. We're too far from that intersection to be useful to, or, uh, retail or restaurant.
Okay, at this point, um, if I could, uh, counsel, I need a motion to approve this. Ref, I'm going to go back and read this. Uh, consideration of orders number 2020-13 for a request of rezoned parcel number 041062 at 53 West from C2 to R3. Counsel, I need a motion.
Senator, counsel, I would make a motion that this request be denied.
I have a, uh, I have a motion to deny? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion at this time, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, same. The motion fails. So moving along, item D. Consideration of orders number 2020-14 for a request of rezoned parcel number 030C, 050 at 1067 Philadelphia Road from C2 to R3. Brandon, if you will, bring this to us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public, uh, this particular item, uh, was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, agenda by way of a public hearing at the April 20th, Tuesday. Uh, once again, we do have our land use, uh, consultant, Rebecca and to, uh, provide the staff report, staff analysis. Uh, by way of a synopsis, the public hearing was conducted, whereupon there was a presentation provided by the applicant. Uh, subsequently, there were no public comments, um, on the matter. The Plan and Commission recommended a unanimous approval to move this forward to the mayor and council. And with that, I will defer additional comments, uh, to Ms. Kiefer and Mr. Mayor and counsel, uh, if you are also, uh, inclined. I believe the applicant is on the meeting, uh, whereupon after Ms. Kiefer's remarks, uh, they may be able to on the matter. So with that, Rebecca?
All right, thank you, Brandon. Um, so the applicant for this subject property is requesting, uh, rezoning from, uh, C2 to R3. Uh, the property is just over eight acres. And their request is to, uh, develop 80 age-restricted multifamily units, uh, on that property. It's located on Philadelphia Road and given the, uh, lot minimum constraints in the zoning ordinance, uh, 80 units requires about 5.6 acres minimum. So that means if there are any interfaces, uh, desire to be developed on this acre, that they've got, um, about an extra 35 units, uh, with, that they could do with the remaining two and a half acres, given those lot minimums. Uh, but again, that will have to come in, uh, through a, a separate rezoning request at that time. Um, so there are, were a number of site and other project, uh, details that were not addressed in the application material. Um, in general, it's a single building, um, that will house all of those 80 units toward the northern end of the, of the property. Um, in, with a parking lot wrapping that building. Um, but some of the characteristics that weren't, uh, addressed in the initial application were, um, what the site amenities were, um, what the landscaping plans were, their pedestrian amenities and, uh, building specifications, the material specifications. So we did ask for, uh, those specifications as a part of the snap report. Um, and using the, the criteria in 94, uh, dash 43, we did, um, make the findings to recommend approval of the project to given the, the property is located within a suburban infill character area. And the policies, um, in the comp plan in general and for this area do support, uh, aging in place and improving quality of life of residents, uh, giving that, um, that, the choice in housing. Um, the proximity of the subject site to adjacent services and, and different uses that can uh, accommodate the, uh, age-restricted housing, um, are present, uh, currently. And so based on that, we did recommend the approval with four conditions. Um, and again, these four conditions are based on the qualities and characteristics that are not necessarily evident in the application, but were, uh, qualities and characteristics that were sought after in the comprehensive plan. So they come directly from, um, the character area comprehensive plan recommendations. So I'll read those into the record for you. Number one, development shall be in compliance with the development standards in the zoning ordinance and reflect the site plan and elevations as presented by the applicant. Number two, stub shall, shall be constructed to connect the subject property to future adjacent developments with vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Easement shall be submitted prior issuance of a final CO to accommodate the access. Number three, soft surface trails and sidewalks shall be provided on site. And number four, a minimum five-foot sidewalk shall be constructed along the road frontage running the length of the subject property. The sidewalk shall be placed behind a landscaped strip running parallel to Philadelphia Road with a minimum depth of seven feet. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, counsel, at this point, I would, um, accept a recommendation to approve or deny. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if, uh, I believe, uh, is here, if you all have any desire to hear from the applicant.
Yes.
Yes, if he is, please do.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Ms., uh, counsel, thank you all so much for your time this evening. Um, I'm, I'm Philip Searls. I'm the president of the Beverly J. Searls Foundation. Uh, we are nonprofit developers here in Georgia. We specialize in senior housing. Um, we like to say that, uh, this morning about 2,000 seniors woke up in the communities we've developed here in Georgia. And we're, uh, very proud of the developments that we have, have completed in the past. Uh, I believe I have turned in some photographs of some of our existing communities, which would be very similar to the quality, uh, the caliber of our construction for, and the landscaping plan we would be looking to do in Jasper. Um, we, we've seen all four of the, uh, of the zoning conditions. We emphatically agree to all of them. We're working with the, the owner of the total 18-acre acre portal uh, to determine where best to do the inner parcel access for their future use as well. But we fully intend to have, uh, access to the adjoining parcel next door to us. Um, and we've gone through some of your, uh, some of the, the zoning and landscaping plans. We see no problems whatsoever. Um, this is very consistent with, uh, what we normally develop.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I think Brandon was going to try to get a, a picture up here. Uh, that's it.
Yeah, a little further down, uh, the other group that had, had a lot of work they submitted. This, this will be our, our land plan, our, our site plan right now. We would most likely on that southeast corner be We would most likely on that southeast corner be joining to the, the additional land. And I also do want to say that I believe the remainder of our land is in wetlands. Actually, Tamika Gordon, who's on this call from GEC, I might end up doing our, our environmental determination to determine that, but we would not be taking any more of this land. Let me put it another way, no more of this parcel would be ever developed after, after this development. So we are working with the landowner on the total 18 acre parcel to determine where's the best place to put the interparcell access for their future intended use as well. We believe in the, in the lower right hand, yeah, the lower right hand corner would be the appropriate location, but we just want to confirm with you. Other amenities on the site, we will have a gazebo. You can see some of the photographs of some of our existing communities. We will have a gazebo like you can see in the photograph there on the top right. We will have, most likely we'll have a koi pond with a water feature, a waterfall. We will have inside the community will a pool room, we'll have library, a business center, a chapel. And I know sometimes people don't like hearing that, but you know, we, we'll put a chapel in and it's going to be open to some of the local churches to come in and do service there. And there will not be meals on site. This is not like a commercial kitchen type situation. This is an all independent living, but it is age restricted. We did restrict the land to be age restricted, so no matter what, this community will always be a senior property. And with that, yeah, y'all can see these are, in the top left corner, I believe this community is on the closest one to y'all down in Mableton, and the top left corner is over in Gainesville, Georgia. If any council members would ever like a tour of any of our communities, I am more than happy to take anybody out there. These are all, by the way, senior communities that we have. Each one of these communities is age restricted.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that, Mr. Searls. Counsel, I need a motion, please, on, on item D for consideration of orders number 2020-14.
Make a motion for approval with conditions previously discussed.
We have a motion for approval with condition. And Mr. Looney, we have a second. So with a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, please say, or wait, is there any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. The motion carries. Welcome to the note, Mr. Searls.
Looking forward to it. Thank y'all very much.
Item E is consideration and approval of resolution number 2020-01 for the 2019 amended final budget for the city of Jasper. And Brandon, will you bring this forward?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, for counsel, for the public, Lindsey Williams is on this meeting as well. If you have any questions procedurally, what we are doing as staff is preparing for the 2019 audit that will be presented to you all by our auditors at the June meeting. This amended budget is, I don't want to say procedural, but in essence, what we have done is identified all the expenditures within the departments and the line items that in layman's terms, if you had one budget that was over 20,000, but you had one budget that was under 20,000, you in effect amend your overall budget to reflect a balanced approach of not having your expenditures exceed your revenues. So with that, Lindsey, if you have anything you'd like to add, you can unmute and provide as such if the elected will like to hear from you.
We always like to hear from Lindsey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't, I don't have a whole lot. Brandon kind of sums it up, but we just need this for our audit presentation that we're going to have in June from the auditors. But if you, if y'all do have any questions about the changes that's in your packet, the amended budgets, the PDF packet, the last page shows any of the changes that were made. There, there wasn't a whole lot of changes, so, which is fortunate. But if y'all do have any questions or anything or need further explanation, you can just contact me, I'll be glad to explain.
Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time.
Accounting, this is something that we have to do every year, and I think Brandon avoided calling it procedural, but it really is.
So was that a motion?
And I move to approve the amended final budget for the city of Jasper, 2019 amended budget.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item F, consideration approval of city manager employment agreement extension. And I just want to say that from a mayoral standpoint, I think that we, we would do really good if we could do this and they can feel happy about it. So I'm going to ask David Siphon if you'll bring that forward to us.
Thank you, Mayor. In your package should be an extension agreement to the agreement for professional services and employment at the city manager. This extension agreement reflects the discussion of the council at the council's retreat. And so it is ready for approval.
Counsel, this was distributed some weeks ago to us. I think I have reviewed it and I remember comments from some of the other council members. I'd like to make a motion this be approved and signed by the mayor and city manager.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. That motion carried quickly. Welcome aboard for an extended term, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Item G is consideration approval of the job descriptions for finaster director, city clerk, deputy finaster, deputy city clerk, customer service manager, human resource director, custodian, customer service representative, deputy court clerk, administrative assistant, administrative assistant in development department, assistant police chief, locator, special products coordinator, and meter reader. Councilmember Looney and councilmember Snaby, would you bring this to us, please?
Again, these were discussed at our April meeting, presented at the April meeting. There have been some changes made, minor changes. I'd like to make a motion they be approved, there'll be more coming as we work through this process.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, but before we take that vote, Brandon, do you have any further to say on this?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, just to echo councilmember Looney, from a staff's perspective, what we want to do is continue moving the dial ahead in terms of the organizational chart last month, along with some key leadership position appointments. Couple that with these job descriptions, along with the next item that you all be considering, subsequent job descriptions at next month's meeting, just hopefully bring some finality to council direction. So with that, staff has nothing further.
Counsel, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. The motion carried. Item H, consideration approval of city of Jasper employee evaluation forms. Again, councilmembers Looney and Snaby, would you bring this to us?
What is presented is a very simplified evaluation form. It's something that I think council has been wanting for a number of years and now has been able to present for approval. It does give an opportunity for employees and the employer supervision to sit down and have an annual discussion of what is, what's happening and what is to be expected in the next period of time. I make recommendation, I make the, my motion it be approved.
We have a motion in a second to approve this form, employee evaluation form. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. The motion carries.
Great job, everybody.
I think it's wonderful.
Stella did a great job on, on working on the job descriptions and helping us get through that for sure.
Lot of work.
Yes.
Searching my package. Item I, I can't tell you how much pleases me. Consideration approval of a resolution number 2020-02 for temporary moratorium on rezoning. Brandon, will you bring this to us?
Mr. Mayor and counsel and for the public, you may recall that last month, we engaged the services of Clark personally to aid us in our efforts of examining our zoning ordinance. Specifically, as earlier in the meeting indicated, we had begun the process of evaluating from a staff perspective, legal consultation, putting a new zoning district, such as the DRI-6. However, we felt as though that it would serve our community well to engage the services of more qualified individuals such as the firm of CPL to do a more comprehensive review. As such, to give, hit the pause button to enable us to, to do this zoning ordinance justice, and in light of the fact that with COVID-19, there may be an opportune time to put in a temporary moratorium on rezonings. Gives us a brief respite to, to kind of get some of this work done. So from staff's perspective, layman's terms, it's just, just a pause to reexamine. There's only an ordinance up to where we go in as a community. And for my counsel, I'll defer to city attorney Siphon for any legal insight.
I just wanted to let counsel know that there's case law that basically provides that with a moratorium, you're not making a permanent termination as to zoning, so we don't have to jump through the notice procedures of the zoning procedures law and can then add this moratorium tonight, so we don't have to have a first or second reading. The other big point that I would like to bring to your attention is that the moratorium is only for 180 days, which I hope will be doable. Anytime you do a major rewrite of your zoning ordinance, then there's a lot of moving parts in that, and it's a fairly major project. We've hired good consultants to help us with that, and so I feel like it's doable. But just know that this is one of those projects that we need to be sure that as those 180 days go by, that we make progress to get where we need to be. In that, with the moratorium, people won't be able to rezone their property. And while 180 days is reasonable when you're doing a total rewrite of your ordinance, beyond that, you know, the courts start looking hard because they want people to be able to have appropriate use of their property and not have undue delays in their ability to have that use. So just wanted to bring those two points to your attention, and if you have any other questions about the moratorium resolution, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
David, am I correct that if this project were completed earlier than 180 days, we could open up zoning for, zoning changes? Are we held to?
You are correct, but you know, to institute a new ordinance, we'll have to go through the zoning procedures act, so we'll have to do, you know, the legal notice of two weeks before any zoning hearing, and then you got to have a zoning hearing on it. And then since it's an ordinance, we'd have to have a first and second reading, so to speak. So typically, it takes the 180 days, but you are correct.
I understand that, and the chances of us getting, being ready in less than 180 days is not, probably not something we should strive for. We want to get it done as quickly, but as well as possible also.
I will say though, that if the property for proposed use is already has the zoning that they want to use the property for, then those people would be able to come in and get a building permit and, and proceed forward. So it will not stop all construction within the city. It, it'll just impact rezonings before the council.
Good point.
Also allows continued annexations and rezonings, correct, David?
That is correct.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move.
We have a motion in a second to approve moratorium for 180 days. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item J, consideration approval of letter of intent for underwriting and placement with Agent Services from Raymond James. Brandon, I'll let you bring that to us, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and counsel and for the public, I would like to point out that this is in fact a requirement through the placement agency, James. Staff had looked at engaging services of professional to examine our existing debt. As a good practice, it's good to, debt such as with the water disorder and other debt, to see if we are in a position to take advantage of any favorable interest rates beyond that of what we have due to our position with PFA and some other agencies. To receive favorable interest rates as a public entity, however, is just a good practice for us to examine those, especially in these times. This letter of intent is This letter of intent is just a formality to allow someone that Sharon, our interim finance director and I have worked with for over a decade. We're not obligating the city to any action or to even utilize the firm per se. It's just federal guidelines require us to execute LOI. City Attorney Siphon has reviewed this document and I believe he finds it in proper order. And beyond that, just excited that we have the opportunity, if you all see fit, to have this firm look at some things for us. And we have ensured that they understand that the top priority for us at the present time, light of the USDA conditions from last week, we in no way, shape or form jeopardize any of the favorable loan ratio that we were provided. So they are fully on board with ensuring that.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Have motion in a second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Consideration approval of repairs, a transmission to the dump truck. Brandon, what have you done to our dump truck?
Well, believe it or not, my original ambition stemming from the mayor and council goal setting retreat, you may recall that I was very much interested and still am in looking at how we could institute a program due to the fact that we do have some avocados. Albeit, we are in the midst of a pandemic with COVID-19. And as such, we are not in a position to incur an ambitious fleet management plan at this moment. So I say that to qualify my next remarks, that we do have an older dump truck at the water pollution control plant that needs some much needed work done. It was unbudgeted, but we do have funds available. The 7,500 did exceed a abilities to authorize. However, we did receive a favorable amount of 3814. Parks Truck Center was 3814. Wormy's Truck Repair, 7,500. This is to the CJ1, I think it's a 1994 tandem dump truck. Due to the discrepancy or the difference in the two quotes, I do want to seek out and not to exceed, which is why I did not authorize David just to move forward with the repairs. Just in case, once they lift it all up, you just don't know what you're going to find. So I'd like to, to ask up to 5,000, which would be knocking on my authority. And I just prefer to seek out the elected's approval.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. So when I first read this next request, I, I kind of thought it might be a, some type of a streaming television, but it turns out it might be just a little different than that. So this is consideration approval of streaming current monitor for the water treatment plant, which doesn't resemble a TV, I don't think. Brandon, would you bring that?
And mayor and council and for the public, Mr. Hall, due to the format, I'm not requiring attend, we're able to articulate it in the background sheet. I did sum this down for my certification, no reflection on y'all. But when I asked David what exactly his request was, I wasn't able to comprehend it at first. So I was able to get to the gist of it, which is this is a device that monitors water as it comes into the plant. What it does is it sets, calibrates a correct amount of chemicals that is to be added to be in compliance or in accordance with the clean water standards. The existing device that we had needed a significant amount of work done to it, approximately $16,000. A new device would be 20,000. The firm has a loner or refurbished one that they kind of loan out to communities. This refurbished one is in much better condition than ours and it is $5,000. So I asked David if this would accommodate our needs since I'm not wanting to necessarily spend 20,000 on a new one, albeit once again, if the elected body wants to, we can. But I think the 5,000 would be more than adequate for our needs at this moment.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
I like the motion that we spend $5,000 on the refurbished unit.
We have a motion, spend $5,000 on a refurbished unit. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, and this is a, we're down to the happy part. Consideration approval of asphalt and concrete work driveways for the Grandview project. Brandon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, closure. I was not fully apprised of what exactly this entailed until I went out and looked today and confirmed with Ronnie and David. But you may recall, we installed a new water line along Grandview. And what we had verbally committed to was ensuring that certain driveways that we had to cut where we could not bore underneath, put them back in a position of comparable or better, just in terms of allowing us to move forward with our pipe. We do have essentially this moment, two concrete driveways and two asphalt driveways that we are seeking approval. You all to let us hire someone to do specifically. Oh, I guess my phone fell. John Clark gave us a quote of $4,940 for the concrete, two driveways. This is to cut out and haul off and then to reform and then to replace the four inch for two driveways. And we've got another quote from Bopulay, the same specs, same driveways of 3,450. Additionally, we had Mr. Clark provide us, we had two additional driveways exceeding $4,000 with Kevin Moss obliging for 900 for those two. So although once again, the 3450 plus the 900 does appear to be below the 5,000 threshold, whereupon you all would tell me just to I would like to seek out and not to exceed for concrete and asphalt. Driving out there today, although we're only doing these two concrete and two asphalt. And I'm not necessarily inviting others to solicit or request us to. I do want a little bit of authority to exceed the approximate 4,500. So out not to exceed 5,000 for concrete and asphalt work.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve this for not to exceed $5,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second for approval of the asphalt concrete not to exceed $5,000. Any further discussion?
Can this be splash money?
In, in consultation with Lindsay, we did some asphalt and concrete. The answer is it could, but because it's questionable, we would allocate these monies from our water department just to ensure that we don't have any sort of questions.
I understand.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Counsel, I need, I need a, enter into executive session. Brandon, would you explain to the audience on here that they will, that we will go away temporarily?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council and for the general public and press, I will be pausing the recording. I will be requiring the elected official to mute our device and to turn the camera feature off. I will be reaching out in accordance with our agenda that we posted that I will be conferencing the city attorney, officials on their phones. And at the conclusion of executive session, we will come out as though we were in council chambers and come back in to the virtual meeting, whereupon we'll begin recording again. And then conduct the remainder of our agendas. I'm going to pause and ask all of us to mute and off. And I will then, then seeing each of the
Are you going to call us or we need to call you?
I'm going to call each of you.
We need to have a vote on this. All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are legal.
Right.
Counsel, entertain a motion that we can have an executive session. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are back. Mr. Looney?
Yeah, Brandon, I'd like, if you would, to identify the individuals on the new business item G, job descriptions that were approved earlier this evening for council vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Looney and mayor and council and for the public and for a matter of of a council consideration and action. I'm going to identify the positions y'all approved earlier with the associated employee for consideration. The finance director, city clerk position is unfield, we will begin advertising for that. Deputy city clerk, Tara Benson, deputy finance director, Lindsay Williams, customer service manager, Rachel Childers, human resource director, Stella Brewer, custodian, Paulette Payne, customer service representative, Ashley Tunberg, deputy court clerk, administrative assistant, Jill Asinger, administrative assistant in development department, Shawna Coleman, assistant police chief slash major, Jim Gleason, locator, special projects coordinator, Charlotte Fortner, meter reader, Stephen Meadows, meter reader, Casey Williams, meter reader, Ed Buck, meter riddy, reader, who's also the acting supervisor for meter readers.
Like to make a motion, these be approved?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the list as, as stated to us by the city manager, Brandon Douglas. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same. Unanimous, Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, committee reports. Development committee, that will be Councilman Sonny Proctor and Kirk Raffield.
One update before anyone else, I assume, will speak. We did have a kickoff meeting and it was exciting. It, it's nice to have professionals and expert in the field come alongside the city and our organization to help us move along.
Thank you, Kirk.
I agree, and we, we actually have a follow-up meeting on Wednesday. So obviously a very busy meeting tonight based on development and moving forward. A lot of work was done on Mr. Reese's proposal and research was done for zoning density across the country. So I think we're really doing a great job and appreciate everybody's support.
Counsel, are there any questions to address to these two? Item B, streets, street and parks committee, council members Dan Snaby and John Faust.
As you know, earlier this evening, we approved the, the new playground, well, he talked, the new playground equipment for city park, which is very exciting. And then also too, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but at the old bank property, we're getting it ready to go. It's looking really good. You know, we bought it for about a hundred thousand dollars. And you look at the parking lot part of it, you're figuring it's about $50,000. And we're going to put 15 spaces in there and that equals about 16,000 if you break that down with the improvements that we put in the bill and make it 66. So we're basically getting about $4,400 worth of parking space, which the average is between five and 10,000. So I think we've done pretty good and I'm, I'm excited that it's going to give us that parking downtown that we've been needing.
And has been done.
Yes.
Yes.
It looks good.
It looks really good. Administration Committee, council members Jim Looney and Dan Snaby.
We've received the, and, and made comments on the draft of the purchasing policy. I'd like for staff to continue that and complete for presentation at our council's June meeting. Hopefully for adoption.
And?
Yes, I, I agree with, with Jim on that. We need to move forward with those.
Okay, great. Thank you. Water and wastewater, council members John Faust and Dr. Sonny Proctor.
Well, obviously the USDA call meeting last week is a huge deal. And looking forward to that infusion of money from the federal government into our community. Also like the idea of the streaming tool that we got tonight. So a lot of, lot of positive stuff happening on water and wastewater.
Yeah, and we want to thank everybody for their hard work. It's really paying off.
Thank you. Police and fire committee, council members Kirk Raffield and Jim Looney.
The, I think all of us were aware about the fire department traveling through town during a day last week, I believe it was, trying to just let the kids know that the clowns are out there. And I think it was well received and appreciate their efforts in there.
Yeah.
Great. And Kirk, anything to add? And Kirk, anything to add?
Not really. The departments are operating, um, the best they can during this challenging time. They're doing a phenomenal job of adapting. We certainly want to commend all of them for their hard work. It, it is stressful. I know that every employee in the city is feeling and across the board. So, uh, it's not directly related to that committee, but thank you to every single employee.
Thank you.
Yes.
Financial report, Brandon Douglas, city manager.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'll make it, uh, brief. You'll see in your packets, uh, Lindsay was able to provide us with some, uh, documentation where some of this, uh, information, your memo was sourced from. Um, we have not begun feeling any effects negatively, uh, of COVID-19. Our revenues over expenditures is three eighty-one, oh seventy-four, seventy-nine. So we're in a healthy position, uh, in regards to that. We are, uh, maintaining our expenditures, uh, uh, and identifying where we spend. Uh, lost receipts, um, was up in regards to our local option sales tax of one hundred eighteen thousand, eight thirty-five, oh six, which I think is approximately ten thousand or so dollars more. Uh, this, uh, past April of twenty versus April of twenty nineteen. Uh, the TVT, uh, you've heard me talk about that last year. Uh, it's actually up from last month to, uh, from five thousand up to seventy-two, twenty-one. However, once again, uh, that is considerably down from the twenty-four, nearly twenty-five thousand from last April. Uh, I do not look for, uh, the state to take any action on that, uh, this calendar year or this session. Uh, building permits, uh, albeit, uh, Lonnie and Shawna and Ian and Randy are working really hard. Uh, we did pull in a little bit and we're continuing to, to function as best we can. Uh, water and sewer, uh, you will see revenues or expenditures, forty-three, four thirty-six, five thirty. Uh, water receipts, two nineteen, six seventy-five, sewer receipt, fifty thousand, leach eight, uh, sixty-nine-nine. Uh, cost of construction aid, uh, four thousand, which puts us in a pretty healthy position. Um, the five thousand written checks are also attached. I did want to point out that the, uh, the streets and parks committee, I would like to give with y'all in the coming weeks to identify, um, a list of projects relative to sidewalks. Uh, we do have a healthy, uh, splotched balance, remaining twenty-fourteen splotched monies. We do have plenty of time to spend these. We have, uh, half a million dollars as our splotched receipts for April was ninety. Um, so overall, uh, staff is doing a phenomenal job. Our employees doing a phenomenal job of, uh, keeping expenditures as low as we possibly can, all the while providing the services to our community.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Lonnie, would you give a development report, please?
Okay, the, uh, our department has, uh, taken in one electrical permit, two sign permits, two rezoning applications, one variance request, seven building inspections, five soil erosion inspections, and a couple of those were monitored, uh, pretty well daily. Uh, two new business licenses, uh, four business license renewals, two insurance license fees, uh, we're having a lot of animal calls, uh, constantly and having to monitor the city for that. And, uh, just giving a, um, compliment to city employees. Uh, we worked, uh, parking lot, been dredging our water intake. Uh, everything fell into place of that, so everything's going good with that. That's about it.
Thank you. Brandon, the, uh, police reports and fire reports were in our package, I believe. So unless you have something to add to those, we can, uh, assume that those are good to go.
Nothing further. Thank you all.
And, uh, let's see, a, a motion to adjourn is always in order.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. Um, any discussion on that at all? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Goodbye.
Bye, folks.